Okay, good afternoon, everyone. It is 1:03 and we are here for the Lake County Board of Commissioners's regular meeting, July 19th. And I'm going to pull up our packets, an agenda, and share. All right. So, let's see. Do we have an approval of the agenda? Oops, this is the wrong agenda. Nope, it's not. Wait a second.
Okay.
I think that was the one we got from Patty for agenda items, just coming from the clerk's office.
Thank you, okay. Let me try this again. Okay, here's our agenda items, 11 of them. Do we have approval of the agenda? Any corrections, modifications? From the commissioners? I don't have anything.
It's good to me.
Okay.
I don't have anything either.
Okay, thanks. All right, so let's entertain an approval of the, this July 19th agenda as posted.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
None for me.
Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
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 And, um, community informational items, Commissioner Marcella, do you have anything for us today?
Sure, um, I just wanted to give, um, a brief informational update that the Childcare Coalition is still, still working and still holding meetings, um, once a month. So if you're interested in continuing to participate or newly interested in participating, go ahead and send an email and we'll get you scheduled to be on that list serve so that you can participate with us. Also, just wanted to make sure that I shared some informational, items around the public hearing that is scheduled for Thursday. We are currently working to develop a hybrid option for Thursday. And it sounds like, um, that meeting will be held both on Zoom and at City Hall. The city has graciously been able to accommodate us to utilize their space, Thursday afternoon for our public hearing in regards to the Panarc Metropolitan District application. So, um, please stay tuned on the website, website for those, logistical details that'll be forthcoming. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Feedler, do you have any community informational items for us today?
Uh, no, I don't think so, nothing, nothing further for me.
Okay. Um, I'd just like to give an update, uh, the coroner appointee was formally sworn in last Monday. And, let's see, so Alexandra Krieg is, is hitting the ground running and has already been on a couple of calls, as seems true to form with our elected officials and diving right in. At least through our experience, I think, I can speak. Let's see, half moon, half moon access is still closed per, for service needing to go through their processes with getting that project up and running and complete. Had a projected closure through this month and have not been able to connect with Pat Mercer, again, to, to get a status on that, but hopefully, um, the end of the month would be the, the, the longest that the closure will remain. So we'll give an update when we hear it. The Rec Department is doing a fantastic job, as we'll kind of touch on a little bit in the agenda here, but going through our recreation master planning and thanks to Amber and Felicia and a couple of Rec Master, sorry, Rec Board Advisory, Rec Advisory Board, um, volunteers, they've really been pushing and going through that process. Get us.
No, we can't.
To get us, uh, get us moving through that, much needed planning and outreach with the community. Wildlife planning is still happening and, uh, Lake County, Fire and Rescue is also, Level Lake County Fire and Rescue also continuing to try to do some outreach among everything else. And, um, I think that is all for me. Moving into public comments, do we have any public comments? From folks? And when I, I'm actually expanding my gallery view, do you guys see the full Word doc that I'm sharing? Or do I now cover the document that I'm trying to share?
No, we can see, uh, we can just see the, the agenda.
Okay, yeah, okay. All right. Um, all right, into public comment, if there's anyone online that would like to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, please raise your hand or unmute. Kristi?
Thank you, Sarah, thank you commissioners. I just wanted to pop on, I know you guys got a lot on your agenda, so I'll keep it super brief today, but I have met with the policy advisory team since I met with you guys at the end of last month. And they are willing to make some recommendations for you guys regarding, the menu of options attached to the House Bill 211217 funding that's going to come down from the state. And I just kind of wanted to float that past you guys if that seemed like a reasonable, use of their time and helpful to you guys.
Yeah, I, I mean, well, just as one question, I think that would be great to hear recommendations for sort of how, what, the, by the policy team and the general work on housing going on in the county sort of meshes with the direction that that bill took. So, I'd certainly be open to that.
Thank you, Commissioner Feedler. Kristi, I'm sorry, I was navigating some Zoom here, did you say you might bring that up on the, meeting on the 29th? With the?
No, sorry, um, the, I've just met with the policy advisory team since that last joint work session. And as a group, they have said that they are willing to, to dive in and, and do some work on making recommendations on how the county could, um, become qualified for those funds. And I just wanted to run it past you if you guys felt like that that was appropriate and helpful.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Feedler, thank you.
Yeah, Kristi, I, I think I would agree with that, and I think if you can, try to bring to us, um, maybe some dates and times that would work for us to take a deep dive into that, that'd be fantastic.
Great. They'll be meeting again in, in August, the, the beginning of August, so I'll circle back to you guys after that. Thank you. All right, thanks so much. Do you have anyone, Colleen Nielsen, do you have an update for us from Public Health?
Hey, guys, thank you so much, I apologize, I recognize that I did not mute myself when I jumped on and continue to answer questions here in the office. But yeah, I just wanted to kind of give a quick update of COVID. It's still here, it's still in our county, as expected. We do recognize that the governor ended the emergency order, which is a lot, which allows a lot more of what we would call normalcy for capacity and things like that in and around our county, as well as our state. We just want to tell folks to continue to be mindful, if you are sick, to get tested. We are continuing to see cases here in Lake County, continue to see like family spread, folks are hanging out together, that kind of thing. And we still have vaccines available, we still know that, you know, in order to continue to keep our cases low, it's, you know, testing, quarantining and isolating as needed, as well as receiving the vaccine if you're eligible. At this point in time, we have 63.9% of our population has had at least one dose, which is really great, so that equates to 4,400 people in our community have had one dose. As far as folks that are fully vaccinated, meaning that they do have two doses, we're at 56.6%, which puts us at 3,894 folks in our community have received two doses. So we're thankful for all of those folks who have received vaccine. We asked those folks who have their first dose to please follow up on their second dose. We know that that puts us all as a community in a better position, especially as our school age children under 12 do not have access here in the vaccine at this point in time. The vaccine has not been approved, none of the vaccines that are available have been approved for 12 and under. And if you can recognize that we are going back to school here in less than a month for those kiddos. And so we're still trying to have that kind of protective factor as a community that if you're eligible to please receive the vaccine, right now, Public Health does have vaccine available. Please call us at 719-486-2413 to set up an appointment. If we don't have any vaccine on hand, we will ensure that we have it in stock and make it as convenient as possible to get folks vaccinated. So, thank you so much for that. And, um, there is, uh, as we know, the current variant that is circulating is called the Delta variant. It has really hit the west slope pretty hard. At this point in time, we don't have any known cases, we are sequencing a few cases that we have locally, just to see if the Delta variant is here. I would not be surprised, as you can imagine, like COVID, when, you know, prior to testing, we still had it here, even though we didn't have a positive case, and I anticipate that with the Delta variant as well. But we are sequencing, is what they call it, a few cases, it takes about two to three weeks. And if that's the case, obviously, we'll release that information then. We still know that the vaccine is protective against the Delta variant, meaning that, um, that it doesn't usually, if anyone who is fully vaccinated does contract the Delta, it still protects against being hospitalized, being very sick and/or, you know, obviously dying, which is something that we do not want to have. So we continue to monitor and do our work behind the scenes, because it hasn't gone any, gone away. But we are thankful for the decrease in cases and for everyone, you know, being mindful and doing what they can to protect each other. So, thank you.
Thanks, Colleen. Um, I have a question for you, Colleen, the 12 and under, is that a pretty hard, eligibility on birth date? Or if a child is going to turn 12 in weeks or months or this year? Do they allow a kid that's 11 and three quarters to get the vaccine?
No, that, that's a great question. And so with most vaccines, we usually have about a 28 day window prior to them reaching age for it to be a valid dose. There has not been recommendations put out for COVID-19 specifically. So at this point in time, it truly is the day they turn 12 forward.
Okay, so not, not a month before 28 days?
Not, okay. The news is that Pfizer continues to share that they're hoping to have the vaccine eligible for five and up this fall. But as we know, that can mean September, October, November. So, it is encouraging to know that they are making progress as far as being able to open up vaccines to our younger, specifically our school age population, because, you know, a lot of the recommendations continue to be, you know, mask wearing for unvaccinated population indoors, so.
Okay.
That is where we're at.
Great. Any commissioners, do you have any questions for Colleen? Thanks for joining, Colleen.
No, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I, I don't think I necessarily have any questions about, uh, the information that you talked through, but I was curious about, um, planning for returning to school and what that looks like? Or, or what the timeframe is to expect any kind of messaging for that?
Yeah, so right now, the Colorado Department of Education has put out recommendations. I might be able to, I'm not able to, as you guys know, multitask to Google and find the recommendations. But basically, the recommendations as they stand right now, as we know, anything can change, is that anyone who is unvaccinated, that includes staff and students, the recommendation is to be wearing masks while indoors. And so, um, it does not recommend like the hybrid model, it just recommends masking, spacing, you know, as much as you can. But I think for most of our schools, it's still that three foot distance between students at this point in time, no masking outside, as needed, kind of what's happening, you know, across the state currently. And I do have a follow-up conversation this week with the school to see how I can support them, because it does feel like they are going to take those recommendations from the Colorado Department of Education and apply them through the school district.
I, I had a question, that, that, thanks for that on schools. I'm just sort of curious how, like what you're hearing or seeing in data with, you know, the high visitor load we're getting and businesses being open with, I mean, I think as we suspected, it's pretty much on staff to protect themselves with a mask. And I'm just, so I guess, sort of part of that question is, like, are you hearing any feedback from businesses or their staff about sort of like how this is going, you know, or, or, you know, or are people feeling, I was gonna say aggressed, but you know, like, I mean, are they feeling put upon or in harm's way because of how things are going? Or people kind of okay? And it also sounded, if I heard you right, like, we're, we're not seeing a spike here in county. So, but I guess, I mean, I, I, I think I've just been basically super curious to know, like with all the visitors coming through from lots of different states and different parts of the, of, of Colorado, like, you know, or, so where, it doesn't sound like we're seeing any kind of real events, or at least they're not staying in the county long enough. Sorry, that sounds really harsh, but like, you know, you know, they're not showing up here, so it's not showing up in our agenda. At least from.
Right, I understood your question, um, I haven't received any feedback from businesses, obviously, I'm open to hear any of that, or if there's any opportunity for, you know, that conversation with all of us to make sure that we are feeling that we are protecting, you know, our locals first. And as far as outbreak, we've not heard of any outbreak affiliated with any of our events. For example, they're just getting information now on Country Drant, on Country Jam, that is out of Mesa County, and trying to figure out, and to your point, Jeff, you know, as we know, it's, it's usually a 14 day incubation period. So even if people are exposed here, they may not necessarily connect that it's from here and/or, once they go back out of state, you're not, we are not privy unless, you know, it's shared, hey, they were at this event, we think this might have been it. And then that starts that chain of, all right, let's put that information to everyone, were you in this vicinity? Were you at this event? Kind of a thing. And, and what we are seeing with some of these outbreaks, even though it's an outdoor event, are, you know, close contacts, right? Of folks like hanging out with the same person, sleeping in the same tent, you know, doing those kinds of things, you know, versus than just randomly being out, you know, at a concert versus like, oh, next to this person, they have it, now I have it, and we were cheering a tent, and/or we went to dinner together, like all of these other, you know, non-outdoor event related, so to speak, but attended an event that was outdoors. Especially that one, that's a multi-day, people can camp, that kind of thing. And I don't mean to pick on Mesa, it's just the one that's, you know, coming to light right now, because we truly are just going, you know, going to start to cross that threshold. Obviously, I can see Marla is on, I don't know if she's heard anything from our, you know, businesses, any thoughts or concerns. But it's, uh, unfortunately, there's a lot that will just slip through because people, you know, haven't, you know, attributed to being exposed here versus elsewhere. And once they're out, like, you know, we're not seeing them, unless they show up here and then they get sick here. But even then, like, we had a case that was a Denver person, he was through Leadville, but then they took him back to Denver. They're like, no, 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 we think it's Denver, not us, so.
No, but I mean, that's encouraging that we're not, like, our tourist season isn't starting spreader events that ripple through our community. I mean, that, that's encouraging.
Yeah, and I think I, you know, I have to say for, you know, a lot of the folks that are on this call, like hats off to everyone and all the special events planning, and, you know, putting in all of these, you know, protections as best as we, as we can, as we've kind of moved through this situation and feel like people, you know, get it, and they're still, you know, complying as best as possible, and that's all we can ask.
Marla, did you have, thank you, Colleen, did you have anything to chime in on?
Haven't heard anything from the businesses regarding this, the only issue they have is not enough staff.
Okay. Great. Thanks again, Colleen, we appreciate the good work.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Yep. Any other public comment on items not on the agenda? I did, I did post the, um, agenda items in the chat, so we can all track that. Okay, seeing none, no further public comment, I will move into new business. And, uh, yep, it looks like Patty's online here, um, from the clerk's office. Patty, would you talk us through this first and second item? The first is Gem Dutch Acres LLC, the modification of their premises by adding, is it a storage container?
Yes, it is a storage container. That's the modification this time. It's going to be called drying room three, between the trim trailer and the greenhouse, at 1940 number B, County Road Eight. They'll be removing the 16 foot gate located between the trim trailer and 1940 number B, adding a six foot gate located at the northwest corner of drying room three and 1940 number B, adding required security cameras, a siren, and a motion detector. This is not the first time they have modified their premises, they seem to do a fine job. And the state needs our, the county's approval before they can approve it at the state level. So that's what they're asking for today.
Great, thanks Patty, and, and remind us too, again, I'm sorry, I, I do, I know I have been through, I think, at least one or two modifications of the premises, is there any opportunity or did you receive any other feedback from neighbors? Do they notify neighbors of this at all?
That I don't know, but I have not heard any comments, one way or the other, about this facility.
Okay. And it is kind of within the, the footprints already, it's.
It is.
It doesn't appear to be, yeah, um, that big a change. But, um, that seems pretty straightforward to me, commissioners, do you have any questions for Patty?
No, I don't have any questions at this point, thank you.
None for me.
Okay, great. All right, I'm happy to entertain a motion for the approval of modification of premises for Gem Dutch Acres LLC, in the addition of a storage container to 1940 number B.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Okay, hearing none.
It's good to know that there's not, yeah, like a neighbor outcry against that, so that sounds good.
Very good. Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor, aye.
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 Okay. And Patty, number two, we have renewal of fermented malt beverage on premises for Pizza Hut of Southeast Texas, doing business as Pizza Hut.
Yes, this is their normal renewal. I did not receive a fee for the state of Colorado, and on their application, it does have that it's waived due to 20B-001, I'm not sure what that is, but they have paid the county fee of $75.
Okay. Great. That sounds good, no further questions from me?
None for me either, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, happy, happy to entertain a motion for the approval of the renewal of the fermented malt beverage license on premises for Pizza Hut of Southeast Kansas, doing business as Pizza Hut.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
None for me, thank you.
Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
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 Great, thank you Patty.
You're welcome.
All right, and item number three, uh, we have an intergovernmental agreement with Northwest Colorado Regional Collaborative to share a regional eligibility technician, um, and this is through the Department of Human Services. Commissioner Marcella, do you have any other background info for us here?
Um, no, it's just basically a shared position for us with eligibility for public assistance and public benefits through the Department of Human Race, Human Services, sorry. It, we. It's a renewal of an existing agreement, so, um, nothing changing.
Great. I don't have any other questions for you on that.
Thanks.
Okay.
I will make a motion that we approve the intergovernmental agreement with Northwest Colorado Regional Collaborative Shared Regional Eligibility Technician through the Department of Human, Human Services.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Very good, moving right along, item number four. So, this is an update on the Rec Master Planning Proposal Award. We had gone through the, the review committee with staff and the Rec Advisory Board, and myself went through the six proposals submitted and opened in our first meeting and decided that we wanted to interview some of the finalists. So, requested a tabling of the decision to make the award to our special meeting on July 22nd. Amber has notified all of those who submitted proposals that, of the date change for the award. And we just wanted to leave this on the agenda so that we could talk through that and publicly let everybody know of postponing that a little further through this week. Any questions from the commissioners?
No, thank you.
Okay. Anything to add, Amber? I don't suspect there is, but.
Nope, I think you covered it.
Okay. Great, all right, well, we will make that award then on July 22nd. One of the first items on our special meeting agenda, um, towards the end of this week. All right, and, okay, item number five, we have the opening of proposals submitted to Lake County for the Transit 5304 feasibility study request. And I think Kayla, Commissioner Marcella, do you have those queued up?
Um, I believe Crystal does, and if we can give her the ability to share her screen, she can put them on the screen for us. I have not opened or looked at the proposals that have been received thus far. So, I think, Crystal, do you have the ability to share your screen?
Um, I think, I believe that I do.
Should.
Okay.
Are you able to see?
Yeah, we can see them.
So we received four proposals, um, none have been opened or viewed, they've just been saved in this, this folder, but I did pull them up for ease. We received proposals from Kimberly Horn, um, Mead and Hunt. This one is from Burr and Pierce, Air and Pierce. And then the last one was from Walker Consultants.
Okay. Crystal, do they have a budget, um, proposal?
Um, let, within each, each one?
Yeah.
I have viewed them, all I've done is just, is open them. I haven't looked at anything, so, um, you just scroll through and see what we have here. First one is Kimberly Horn. Like mostly experience and project personnel there.
Oh, thank you.
Is that okay?
Yep. It's like 49,965.
Yeah, that looks like their, their proposal, out there. There's a proposal criteria for number seven, I'm not sure what that is, maybe that's, oh, that's just the contract.
Yeah.
Okay. If we could go through, yeah, each and just find the, the schedule or proposed budget.
Hunt.
Lost on 24, it looked like.
Clearly not page 24 of the P. Page twenty-four of the P. So it's like they have an estimated total cost of forty-nine thousand four fifty.
This is for Mead and Hunt, right, Crystal?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, next we have the Fair and Pierce. Like they have a total cost of forty-nine thousand nine seventy.
Okay.
Their schedule. Um, and the last one is Walker Consultants. They are coming in. Estimated cost of ninety-eight thousand four seventy.
Thank you, Crystal. So the next step will be for uh, our local coordinating council to work together to vet these proposals with the city and the county. This project is a partnership between CDOT and the city and the county for, for funding purposes. So we'll do that and then bring a recommendation to the board.
Great, thanks Kayla. Was there a scheduled date for the award or?
Um, so we'll, we'll hope to have that done by our first meeting in August. So August second, we'll have a recommendation to you.
Great, thank you. Okay, thanks Crystal. Appreciate you going through that.
You're welcome.
All right, okay, on to item number six. We have a presentation of the official action record for the major subdivision preliminary plan for Angel View. Paul and Ann, our land use staff are online. And I wonder if you want to talk through that just a bit. And then our action item is number seven, to consider the resolution by the board for the Angel View Major Subdivision Preliminary Plan, Land Use File twenty-nine-teen. Ann or Paul, would you like to?
Thank you, Sarah. So the joint public hearing was held on July twelfth with the consideration of the preliminary, preliminary plan for Angel View subdivision, which is a seventeen lot subdivision half a mile northeast of the village of Twin Lakes and on seventy-one point one acres. And the planning commission has a recommendation for conditional approval to move forward to the board with a list of sixteen conditions. Would you like me to read those on, into the record?
Okay, just one moment. Please, Ann, thank you.
Absolutely. So the board made a motion for recommendation based on the following sixteen conditions. Number one, construction plan documents for building permit are required to include a stamped foundation plan designed and reviewed by a Colorado licensed engineer. This shall be included in a plat note. Number two, the applicant will provide NOX boxes at all gated entry points to ensure emergency egress. The boxes shall be considered a public improvement within the subdivision improvement agreement. Number three, the revised drainage study and erosion control plan, the wildfire protection plan, and amended construction document pages to include parking shall be reviewed by the county engineer. Any suggested revisions shall be considered and adequately addressed prior to final plat. Number four, applicant will provide a will serve letter confirmation from the chosen telecommunications provider prior to final plat. Number five, payment of the school land dedication fee in lieu in the amount of seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars as determined by Lake County School District and approved by the developer shall be due and payable prior to the recording of the final plat. Number six, construction testing and observation during grading and site development, building and pavement construction is required. Applicants shall provide monthly reporting to Lake County Building and Land Use to demonstrate compliance. Number seven, subgrade investigations and pavement design is required. Number eight, foundation installation observation is required. Number nine, an approved water supply plan is required at final plat along with compliance of the preliminary supplemental requirements of section three point sixteen point four CT Utility Plan, BB Water Service and Supply Plan. Number ten, section three point one six point four C four R soils and vegetation report of the Lake County Land Development Code. Applicant shall comply with all soil and vegetation items discussed in the CTL Thompson and Burke Ecology Reports. Number eleven, a lighting plan compliant with dark sky principles shall be submitted prior to final plat. Number twelve, the parking spaces crossing into tract B from Angel View Way shall be repaired. Number thirteen, appendix Q, which is the easement agreement, emergency easement agreement from the private landowner shall be recorded and a reference to it shall be made on the plat in the notes. Number fourteen, the draft subdivision improvement agreement shall be reviewed by legal. With suggested edits provided to the applicant and considered prior to final plat. Number fifteen, all statements made by the applicant in his application and in hearing shall be considered as conditions of approval unless modified by other conditions of approval. And finally, number sixteen, prior to the consideration of the proposed public land dedication, Lake County requires more information. Final decision will be made as part of final plat. And so number sixteen was suggested by staff, I think, while the board was still in the public hearing. But the planning commission did determine based on that very robust conversation about that proposed public land dedication for the emergency facility site to need to have more vetting. And so they added that condition as part of their recommendation to the board. So I would just entertain any questions that the board may, outstanding questions that the board may have. The applicant and the representatives are present today with us as well.
And the, so the, the only addition to what the board had seen in our portion of participating in that joint hearing was item sixteen. And we will, we did cover that in the discussion in the joint hearing a little bit with a conversation about a possible code amendment proposal to make perhaps more useful that tract intended to be dedicated. And I think that, that makes sense to me to kind of work with staff and understand more of what that really looks like and how that might evolve, I suppose. Would, let's see, would we have a work session to discuss that code amendment? Okay.
So the code amendment actually won't be a work session. It, it's a pending application that will go to public hearing. And so it is in the process of being noticed and by publication and then of a public hearing date set to hear that. So that should be occurring in August, probably the second meeting in August. I think is the, our proposed date for the code amendment. So it is, it's actually a pending application.
Okay, and that's an application from Angel View and the applicant here?
Correct, correct. Yes, so that's a pending application that we haven't held the public hearing on yet. But we'll be present. That information will be distributed to the board and posted on our website with the exact code language that's being proposed to, to be changed.
Okay. I think I have more questions on that process and proposing and initiating that kind of thing with staff, but that is unrelated to the application in that hand right now. I don't think I have any other questions regarding the application before us, Commissioners, Marcela or Fiedler?
Yeah, I guess I, I had a suggestion, you know, i- i- if it's helpful and appropriate, just some additional thinking about that last condition to guide the discussion between staff and the applicant as we move towards final plat. So I was actually just gonna, let's see if I can actually do that. Did that work? Yeah, so this would be, I, I just, okay, so I just posted in the chat some additional language, because I, and that condition's like pretty sparse on detail. So again, this may be too much, but I just sort of, again, i- i- if it's helpful for, for staff and the applicant to get a little more guidance from us between now and final plat, I would suggest adding this in.
Um, I would also suggest Jeff, that that's certainly information. I, I think we've got, I, I would anticipate that we could provide that. I think keeping the condition broad is, because we may find that we wouldn't want it to only include those things. So I, I think the condition might, might be kind of nice to be a, a bit broad as we do our due diligence and kind of discovering the things that we're, you know, looking to find out. An email is actually on its way to legal as well, to just kind of broaden our knowledge on, on the dedication and possibilities of it. So certainly, I would just suggest that maybe those parameters or those additional considerations, I think they're very good, but I thought that maybe we could provide them to the applicant for a response. And then we could add that into formulating kind of our response. And I anticipate this is going to be a, a time to gather some really great information. And so the, keeping the preliminary plan condition a bit broad and then fine tuning it as, so that we don't limit ourselves to maybe all of the different information that we might seek as we craft out some different options that, that staff's working on to, to give to the board, along with the help of legal as we move forward into what might be your possible outcomes or response.
Yeah, okay, that, yeah, that makes total sense and to not prejudge, you know, where the discussion goes. And I, and I don't think there's really anything in here that wasn't kind of raised in some of the public hearings. So that's totally fine with me to take that approach that you suggested, Ann.
Well, I don't think that I have any questions at this time. I think everything that I had had a question on you guys just answered, so I, I feel good about that.
Okay. Um, I, I wonder, is the application for the code amendments accepted as in full right now? Or is there opportunity to have a work session around that? I'm sorry, again, I don't really want to convolute the two, but I'm a little confused how we
So the code amendment
Have a, a hearing scheduled already.
A code amendment doesn't have, or it can be proposed without a, we have an application. We don't have work sessions when a member of the public makes an application to be heard for public hearing and the code amendment process is a public hearing process. And so that information, I think maybe just because you don't have it in hand. And I want to, you know, this is a legislative change to the code, so certainly to this afternoon. It's just staff's capacity of not having it. The language, the proposed language in front of you right now, but we can rectify that today so that you do have that language. But the code amendment, the, the basis of it is adding use-specific standards to the emergency service facility that allows it to be considered on a site-by-site basis. Uses are typically contemplated on law, legal conforming lots. And so this gives the ability to consider this on a tract within a subdivision. And so the use-specific standards opens up the availability of the use on things other than legal conforming lots. And so it's, it's creating the ability to consider, in this instance, the placement of the emergency facility on tract E, which is two point one acres. But it, while it's also amending code countywide, allowing a civic use of an emergency facility on things outside of legal conforming lots.
Thank you, Ann.
And, and I apologize that, that you don't have that information in front of you, but that's the basis of it. So this tract and this land dedication, if this code amendment is successful, it would mean that this tract could be used in the fashion the developer would want it to. Currently, without the code amendment, that use is unavailable.
Or, or, yeah, or the developer is intending to offer as a, as a public benefit. Yep.
Correct, correct, yes.
Great. And I, I think just because it has been a, a point of maybe misunderstanding throughout the application, I, I'd like to just take a, a minute to address, you know, the, the concerns of water use and that, that this is a separate process with the Division of Water Resources and permitting and or adjudicating any kind of water use or, or water supply plan to Angel View. And assure folks that the county and the division are, are involved in the conversations and and status with, with the project. Which I guess I can just share my opinion really is not a huge hurdle to overcome as far as augmenting water. It just really needs to go through the proper steps. And Angel View is doing that with the Division of Water Resources. Any other questions or concerns or thoughts for staff? Oh, uh, oh, sorry, go ahead.
None for me, go ahead.
No, none for me, and I think, that's all I was gonna say.
Ann, I wonder, can you just remind us real quickly as well, the, the final preliminary plat is not administrative and it, the final plat does come to the board for another public decision, correct?
Right, it does not go to the planning commission, just to the board.
Okay, but there is a, an forum for that final approval. Just want to make that clear. Okay. Fantastic. Um, is the board comfortable making a motion on file twenty-nineteen? Or the resolution? Is it resol, what's, what's the number of the resolution?
I, I didn't have a number yet. Maybe Patty, I didn't know what the next one was.
It's number fifteen.
Fifteen, okay. So I'll entertain a motion on resolution twenty-fifteen for file twenty-nineteen.
Yeah, I will take a stab at this. I would make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-one dash fifteen, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners regarding the Angel View Major Subdivision Preliminary Plan.
I'll second.
Okay, and as discussion, I, I'd also just like to note with those conditions as Ann read into the record which are included in the resolution. Okay, I have no other comment. Commissioner Marcela or Fiedler, do you?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you so much. And next, Ann, you're up again on number, item number eight, special event permit for the seventy-first annual Boom Days PAC Borough Race.
Yes, yes. So we did get in the application for, from the Boom Days Committee for just the borough race portion of Boom Days this year. There are two different, a long twenty-two mile race and then a fifteen mile race. This goes through the mining district. There are only two conditions of, of the permit. One is that they provide us proof of up-to-date liability insurance. And then the second is that all of the statements they made within their application are considered And then the second is that all of the statements they made within their application are considered conditions of approval. But this was a streamlined application. And and the city has already, I think it's really good to note that the city has already approved their portion. So we're just looking basically at the race course, and I didn't get any action needed back from any other review agencies. Everyone approved it.
Great. I don't have any questions for you. Mr. Fiedler, Ms. Marcella, nope?
No, no questions for me either. Thank you. Seems pretty straightforward.
Great. Um, not hearing any objection. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the special event permit for the Boom Days 71st Annual Pack Borough Race.
So moved?
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay, thank you, Anne. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
All right, and we'll move into item number nine. We have our Caterpillar license agreement and the county attorney, Chris Floyd, is here to join us and give us a brief outline of the agreement for consideration.
Yes, Chris, good afternoon, everybody. So this is, this is a pretty simple license agreement for Caterpillar to be able to access the Half Moon pit for certain testing purposes and such. And so I forwarded a copy of the current draft to you. There are a couple of tweaks that need to be to be made. The term of the agreement is over the course of a year, but in talking with the folks from Caterpillar, they don't anticipate being onsite every month. In fact, it mentioned that typically they, you know, even though it's a one-year term, they don't anticipate using the facility more than four times during a year period. The fee that's been proposed is $1,000 a month for a total of $12,000 over the complete year, and that would be based on whether they use it per month or not at at this stage. So that way, there shouldn't be any administrative burden on the county for tracking that use or for for Caterpillar track that use, if you will. Although they will need to coordinate their access and activities and any materials deliveries and such with Michael Irwin or his designee. Michael, I I tried not to put you as the person that has to be in constant communication with these folks, but did want to make sure that they understood that that things needed to be coordinated with you because they are unlikely to be the only use onsite. And they they understand that as well. And they they also understand that the requirements that they have to comply with the county's current permit for that site. And based on the activities they're proposing, I I don't anticipate any issues, but of course, Michael, I would welcome any input if if you are concerned with that. I think the one remaining question, I'm glad Anne's still on the line, Anne and Paul, I guess, was it's my impression, I think Michael has confirmed this as well, that they don't actually need an additional permit based on the types of activity. They'll just be in there moving materials around and and doing some testing and stuff. They won't be actually doing any extracting, it's my understanding, anything to that extent. So I I don't believe there's a an additional permit, any type of conditional use permit or anything like that that they would need, but I would welcome the opportunity to confirm that with either Michael, Paul, or Anne on that issue, just so we can let them know they don't have to apply for anything else beyond this license agreement.
Yeah, in my opinion, they're doing basically what it's been permitted to do, so not do anything out of the ordinary that I know of.
Okay. Paul or Anne, any 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 other feedback or whatever on that?
So, Chris, I just want to make sure that that I asked the right question, so they wouldn't need to apply for like any kind of additional conditional use permit or like a permit through DRMS or anything like that. That's all covered under under the county's permitting.
I think that's what, Michael, I, that is our impression of the work that they're doing or that they're proposing to do. The the permissible activities essentially is just kind of like operating, driving, testing, you know, that kind of stuff with their equipment. So I I don't think it goes beyond the scope of of what the DRMS permit already covers. In fact, it's less than the scope of what that permit allows.
Yeah, they're just looking at being able to to basically dig and move some of the piles around from one place to another and back and nothing really extravagant or anything.
One other aspect positive for this is to the extent that they bring any materials in, they do plan to leave those for the county, and they won't be trucking those back back out. So it might actually be some usable materials for the county's, you know, purposes after they complete their their use. So other than that, if unless there are other questions, you know, my recommendation at this point, like I said, there are a few tweaks that we need to work through, but nothing that that I think are substantive that would end up not having this go forward. So my recommendation would be to have the V O C C approve it condition on legal final review for execution. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks, Marla and Michael. Commissioners, any anyone willing to make a motion for the approval of the agreement with Caterpillar based on final legal review or conditional on final legal review?
Yeah, I will make a motion that we approve the Caterpillar lease agreement for the Half Moon Pit contingent upon final legal review.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
No, thank you.
So, sounds good.
All right, hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you, folks. I'll follow up with Caterpillar to get the document finalized and then Commissioner Mudge, I'll send it over for you to execute for the county then.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Thank you for working on that. All right. Okay, and item number 10, we have a discussion with Public Works. Uh-oh, did Michael just, oh, there he is, okay. Requesting approval to move forward with the drilling of a new methane monitoring well at the landfill. Michael has been working with our environmental legal a little bit and navigating some C D P H E recommendations and requirements. And this is, to my knowledge and some other conversations that I've participated in with them, a recommendation to help us do simultaneous testing and track landfill activity along with the state. Michael, can you give us a little bit more information or fill in some gaps there for us?
Can I, can I show my screen?
Please, yes, should be able to.
Okay, do you see the gas probe installation estimate?
Yes.
Okay, um. So it was requested that we install another well. We do have one well that is producing methane now. We're not sure where it's coming from, if it's actually coming from the landfill or possibly a mineshaft, maybe. So this well would help to determine if it's, it's going to be in the same area within 100 feet of of this existing well to see if it's actually producing. So I asked Kurt, our environmental engineer, to write up a plan to do the drilling, because he's done it, done all of the wells in the past. And he got four bids to do it. I talked to him today that the lowest bid you can see on there is site services at $5,608. He does not believe that they can complete the task with the equipment that they intend to use. He thinks that authentic drilling would probably be the best second choice because they're using a new technology, which if you look down on the bottom of line number three, they plan on using ODEX drilling method. And I can go into that. He sent me an explanation of what that is, but it's a new technology. They'll be able to go through like solid rock where the other one would not be able to. Obviously, you can see there's some pretty high bids too, so.
Okay.
Basically, this is just to check to see if we, the landfill is actually producing methane. We've got seven wells out there and one well, number seven, actually is the one that's producing methane, and we're not sure why. So it's just to test and make sure that it's correct before we move further, you know, with what to do with it, whether we burn it off at the landfill or or how we handle it in the future.
Michael, and and can you speak a little bit to those next steps? And burning, burning off the methane, does that happen within the site wells or or the well sites, sorry?
Yes, so we could be required to install a torch, which basically burns the methane off. So I don't know if you've you've driven around any other landfills and seen the blue torch burning. That's basically what it is. I know Denver Rapid disposal site in Denver actually collects all of their methane and burns it to produce electricity. Right now, we're not producing enough methane to do that, so it would just be basically burning it off to get rid of it.
And what what is, have you estimated the monthly or annual cost of doing that?
It's that pretty, pretty much free, just installing the, you know, the probe to actually install the torch to get it to burn and then it's free to burn it.
And then, so so what's the other, what are the other considerations for the county? Sorry, let me ask this question better. How? Explain the weighing just burning the the methane coming out of the well versus drilling another well to prove that there, the landfill is not producing or is not the source of the methane.
Um, you know, it just, it could cause further ramifications in the future if it is a landfill, because then we'll have to do additional monitoring on the landfill. When we close the landfill, obviously, we'll still have to monitor it for 30 years. Basically, the landfill is doing what it's supposed to do. It is digesting the trash. And you get methane from trash digest, digestion, if that's the word. But it it is, it's, you know, it's doing what it's supposed to do. And we've finally had a well that showed methane, and now they want us to test, just put in another well to make sure that it is actually the landfill and not something else producing it.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Michael? It sounds like, Michael, the the recommendation is to go with authentic drilling based on cost, but more so utilizing a new technology to drill.
I guess the only, only other question is just, I mean, if it comes to it and there is methane that needs to be collected, is that a, I guess one way, is that a state or a federal control? And also, just in addition to flaring, well, I guess when you come to it, it'll also be interesting to consider, is there any onsite, just like straight heating use that I think is is easier and cheaper to do than an actual gen electric, electricity generator?
You know, that's a possibility. It's just a matter of how much methane that we're actually producing. And right now, we're we're at 100% of the L E O, which is the lower explosive limit. And that varies every once in a while, but not by much.
Okay.
If we could do that, definitely we would look into doing that.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I mean, yeah, I can imagine it not working, depending on how far you have to like run pipe or just operation, you know, I mean, you don't want pipes of methane running all over the place.
Right. And methane is very deadly too, so.
Yep. I guess one, sorry, just one of the thoughts, we get there, I mean, that flare would be not nice to look at in town.
Yeah. It's actually blue and you can barely see it in the daytime, but the blue flame. And it's not that big. It wouldn't be that big.
Yeah. That was it for me.
I don't, I don't think I have any other questions. Michael, I just I guess, just for, and I'm sorry if I missed this. Is this something that we had planned on going into budget discussions, or is this a new new, new thing that we're doing because of the kitchen of the landfill?
It was brought up to us this year that we should do this, and I believe I have enough money in professional services to do that this year.
Okay.
I'd have to verify that for sure, but I I'm I'm almost positive there's more than enough money there to do that.
Okay, that was my only question. I don't have anything further.
Okay. Is the board comfortable making a motion to approve an engagement with authentic drilling? To drill, for the landfill, to drill our own well site to do methane monitoring?
Yeah, I'll I'll take a crack. I move that we authorize Lake County Public Works to engage authentic drilling for a gas probe installation at the the county, Lake County landfill.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion?
None for me, thank you.
Not for me.
All right, hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Great, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Would you, okay, thank you. All righty. And last on our agenda of new business, we have a discussion regarding our meeting formats moving forward. Determining, trying to figure out in-person and hybrid. And I think that Commissioner Marcella has communicated with the county or the, sorry, the city a bit on potential use of city hall chambers, as it is a bit bigger than our Board of Commissioners regular meeting room. And we may all have a lot of conflict with scheduling with the courts, but Commissioner Marcella, do you want to give us a little update there?
Yeah, definitely. So I I just had some very, very preliminary discussions with with Mayor Wabi about how that could work logistically and if that could be something that we could work on together to to utilize the space of the the city council chambers for our our meeting space. And he was very open to that and putting together kind of an MOU with us to utilize that space just so that we could, we could make sure that, you know, each of us are appropriately investing in equipment assets to make that room available for hybrid model meetings. So I think there's still quite a few people that are somewhat uncomfortable with doing some in-person meetings. And for some, it's just pure convenience to do a Zoom meeting, but giving, giving the ability to have an in-person meeting and for people to come to our meetings in person seems to be some important feedback that we've gotten. So just in some very preliminary discussions with him on on how to make that work. And so the city seems to be very amenable to that. I think it also is a really great long-term solution for us because of our space needs right now. I know that Commissioner Fiedler and I have have worked a little bit on trying to figure out some of the logistics within our current courthouse operating space. And so it just seems like that might be really the best fit going forward because we just don't have enough space right now for all of our people that we employ here. So I I'm just, I think the V O C C meeting room is a great space, but can be used by, you know, maybe potentially the manager or or whatever that looks like. I don't know if you have the manager or whatever that looks like. I don't know if you have any, any further thoughts on that, Commissioner Maj or Commissioner Fiedler?
I mean, just to say, see, I think we've just outgrown that B O C C meeting room. It, I think, and any meeting where we have an issue of kind of broad public concern, there are people out the door, you know, I've heard people that, you know, it just, it's stuffy, windowless, zero air circulation, it's just not, not an appropriate space. And then also I'll say, I mean, I do think that while I think most of us got pretty sick of Zoom at one point or another over the last year, as, as you said, Commissioner Marcela, it really does allow, I mean, I mean, I think in, in some ways, we've never had greater public participation in our meetings as when people can call in, you know, on their way home from work on the phone or, you know, like, you know, from, from home if they're watching kids, you know, I think it, it really is an asset and, and sort of a side benefit. It, it's remarkably easy to record and post those discussions. So I'm sure we'll have some sort of teething pains figuring out the hybrid mode and, and working through, through that, but I, I think it'll actually increase public participation and transparency, you know, down the road.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I agree with everything you both have said. And I think, yeah, if, if nothing else, the ease of recording and posting those for public viewing has been really convenient. And nice, a nice addition via Zoom and the website. Okay, well.
I, I, I actually, sorry. Sarah, if I could, I, I will say that I've heard, you know, some, some public feedback that I, you know, I, I think if, you know, to the extent possible with like our meeting and travel schedules, you know, if, if people do appreciate seeing the three of us, three commissioners, you know, sort of in person and be able to, you know, chat before and after and see us in person, you know, I think that, you know, that opinion has been made known. So, you know, so throw that into the mix as we figure out how to make these hybrid meetings work going forward.
Yes, I mean, it's been a long, kind of a long time discussion before COVID even on shared meetings or using City Hall because of the size and space of the, of the commissioner's room. So I would suspect that it's a rather easy conversation to have and we can kind of iron out those details pretty quickly, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, the mayor had, had reached out about maybe setting up a time to have a work session. And then he, I think he anticipated trying to have a work session this week, but it sounds like maybe next week would be better for us because I think trying to prepare for a public hearing on Thursday and that type of thing, I think our week is pretty full this week. So if we can, if we can send out a, I can send out an email to get kind of some times together for us to pinpoint a work session time with him and maybe we could just talk through some of those logistics a little further with him at that point. I'd be happy to do that this afternoon.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you. All right. Are we, is that it for item 11? Some marching orders and just really public kind of communication on any kind of transition and change. Moving back into person, in-person options?
Maybe, maybe just the very last thing on that is like, as we, you know, if we do, it sounds like we'll make that transition just to make sure that we remember to post the right physical location and don't cut and paste in the courthouse by accident. And I'm actually wondering whether we posted anything already and we probably won't change things that fast, but we just need to make sure that we post things properly.
Agreed. Thank you.
Very good. Quick, quick question, if I may. Do you, do you anticipate that with the hybrid, that the three of you would actually be present in person and then just have the, the, the video, if you are Zoom, option available for others?
I think it could be a combination of both potentially. You know, maybe I would anticipate for like our regular meetings, maybe potentially the three of us would be there in person and then have a Zoom option, but maybe for work sessions or times of, of traveling that that may be somewhat inconsistent at times. So that we have some flexibility with being able to participate in, like, let's just say C C I conference and a regular meeting. You know, and have that option to have just strictly the Zoom platform and then a hybrid platform as, as well.
I also wonder if you're, part of your question, Chris, is opening up for just all public participation and or physically coming into view. And I might anticipate that that would, might fluctuate given current COVID conditions and we'll probably keep, you know, social distancing and folks apart and, and mess if, you know, they need to be. And maybe we'll just see how that demand or what the activity might be moving into being in person.
Yeah, that, that actually was my, one of my follow-ups. And one of the reasons for asking too, is I was just going to note that in the event that perhaps you wanted to have a meeting or a work session and City Council Chambers isn't available, there is the possibility that municipal courtroom would be available and all that. Not as large as City Council does have, we have an owl and the video audio capabilities as well. So especially like for work sessions and such, we, we only, right now only have one docket a month and that's on the third Wednesday. So, or the second Wednesday, sorry. So other times it might be available for smaller meetings. When City Council Chambers aren't, I would recommend using City Council Chambers first if they're available, but if not, that might be an option as well.
Okay.
All right, I can, I'll get that coordinated and scheduled with us and, and the city.
Okay. All right, great. Okay, we are through our items of new business and moving into reports, bills and payroll. I will entertain a motion for an approval of the public trustee report for the second quarter of 2021.
So moved?
And Jeff seconded. And any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and Jeff did?
Aye.
I, I think there's some overlap there simultaneous, unmuting. Thanks, Jeff. All right, and I'll entertain a motion for the schedule of receipt and dispersment for the period, January 1st through 2021. Sorry, January 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2021.
So moved?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
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 All right, and then moving on to the Veteran Service Officer Report for June of 2021. I'll entertain an approval.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, and I just, I just want to note, I think we've mentioned this a few times before, but we've kind of lost track of maybe having a work session and or getting kind of an update from the Veteran Service Officer to, to understand more about the work that he's able to do and the outreach and how, how we can support. So with that being said and seeing maybe no other comment. All those in favor? Aye.
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 And then moving on to minutes, we have one set of minutes for the regular meeting held July 6th, 2021, and I had some. Let's see, some comments. I'm gonna pull up. Pack it. Uh, sorry, let's see. All right, scroll down. Okay, here are our minutes. Okay, let's see, I'm looking at my notes too here. Item number three. I didn't know if it was worthwhile to kind of reword some of this. To be sure to give the impression, we did determine a not to exceed of 10,000 to put in there, but also asked for some other language regarding, you know, this amount not to exceed unless otherwise notified and agreed upon between the parties. Looks like shaking heads, is that the right?
Yeah, that, that sounds right.
Okay, I just didn't, I just wanted to be sure it wasn't recorded as a hard stop in case we, you know, needed to adjust that. Okay.
No, I think my recollection is that we had thrown out that dollar amount, but then if that, but agreed that that could be subject to change based on the upper Arkansas's, you know, general operating.
Yeah, yeah, suggested the dollar amount. Yeah, okay. Right.
And I think there's probably some like, you know, typical language in a contract like this, like, you know, mutually agreed in writing, you know.
Yeah, and, yep.
Want to contact or something.
Yep, and Chris, yeah, Chris did do that for us and
Yeah.
Right away after that meeting. So, okay, great. Well, I can list that as a request for amending. Let's see, item number four, I wanted to kind of clarify here that Katie Welter had submitted a proposal on behalf of Weathervein Law. So approving a motion to accept Weathervein Law's proposal to continue facilitation, I think, might be more appropriate. And therefore it's pointing to that engagement letter and terms.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. And then I think if you could just correct Katie's name on there.
Oh, yeah. Didn't even catch that.
Yeah, K T Y, that'd be great.
All right, I will. Okay. Let's see, number six, I wrote approve, I believe our motion technically was to approve purchase authority to Michael in the neighborhood of $4,000, $40,000. Because it might have been a little bit less based on the timing of his engagement. So he was just looking for authority to make that purchase. Does that sound right to you guys? Okay. And not necessarily specified. Okay, I'll, I'll list that as well. And then number seven. The, let's see. To do, sorry, hold on a second. The suggestion to item, condition number 15, was not necessarily to add, it, it was already included in language for the outdoor fire pits to be approved, but to remove the, the specified language to have fire pits that could be safely secured and approved by fire rescue. So maybe just language to amend condition 15 to only include that, that portion is my suggestion for clarification on seven. I think that's fine. Can you, can you scroll back up just a little bit?
To which one?
To the first page.
Sure.
Okay. Um. Okay, thank you. If you, can you scroll down just a, just slightly? Okay, perfect. I just wanted to see. All right, I don't think I have any, any other questions. Okay. You, did you guys have any other? Comments or questions or?
Didn't, but thanks for catching the ones you did.
Okay.
Sarah, I'm curious if we should add in there the dollar amount for the engagement with Weathervein. Legal for, I don't know if that's important to have in there for number four. With Katie Welter where the, the proposal referenced the, the hourly amount for herself and staff. I don't know if that is something you want to put in there or not, or if you feel like that's.
My, my suggestion would be not to include the specific rate because they were actually a couple of different rates. It was the rate for her services then and a separate for administrative services. And so I, I think it could end up confusing if you end up looking at it and your different rates on there.
Okay, okay. No, that's fine. I don't have, go ahead, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, if you'd like to specify the proposal terms that were proposed through, what was it, 2020? 22 or 23? Well, 2020, it would be through 2022. So that it was gosh, I think, I think it was at $150 an hour for legal services and $25 an hour for administrative services.
I, I, yeah, I think, I'm not hung up on putting that in here, but I think just makes, making sure that we do reference a proposal in here is important. So that, yeah, and that there are those details somewhere.
I was gonna say, let me, what I can do too is let me, if I pull it up real quick, refresh my memory as to the date of it. Because you could just say dated June 28th, 2021.
Okay.
That was the date of the proposal.
Okay, great. That sounds great. All right. Date of June?
28, 2021.
All right. Okay. Any other comments for minutes there?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'll entertain a motion if you all want to make one.
Sure, I will make a motion that we approve the minutes from July 6th meeting.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor with, sorry, with the changes. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Jeff, I missed you. Did you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, moving on to last final items, bills and payroll for pay period ending July 2nd, 2021, and bills and payroll for pay period ending July 16th, 2021. I will entertain a motion for approval of both of those periods, pay periods.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
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 All right, and with everyone left on here, offer another space for, for public comment, though I think everybody here has been here from the beginning of the meeting. Staff, any comments for the board before we sign off? Looks like a quiet crowd. All right.
Have anything, thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. Okay, we appreciate everybody joining us. All right, then at 2:32, I think we'll adjourn unless the board has anything else.
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, perfect. Thanks, everyone. Have a great afternoon.
Thanks, you too.
Bye-bye.